...meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted you have all joined us this evening. The agenda will be displayed on the screen in front of the room for you to follow along, and there will be two opportunities to address the board this evening. First being item 6.1, the first set of public comments is relative to item 7.1 through 11.5. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is item 12.1. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter will be late. She texted. Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, up first this evening, we have district highlights and recognitions. 3.1 is a resolution for our community's, our schools' recognition. May I have a motion to approve the resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Reverend Velardo.
Thank you, President Davidson. I appreciate that. We are going to do some recognitions tonight of people that have done unbelievably good work throughout the district with our community, our schools, our parent council. So if you'll allow us just a moment, I'm going to go to the podium. The board treasurer superintendent will stand right in front here, and we will begin. This really is one of the highlights of our year, getting to recognize all of you that do so much of the work on the front lines of our school district at this time from our community, our schools. I would like to have Colleen Moody, Molly Lynch, and Abie Rabidaw please come forward. Now, before they go forward and shake some hands and receive some gifts, I would like to read the resolution. Resolution of appreciation for our community, our schools, whereas more than two years ago was spent engaging some 2,000 community members, staff, students, and families in discussion about the future direction of the Westerville School District. Whereas when Issue 8 was placed on the ballot, a multitude of volunteers from our community, our schools stepped up to educate voters about its benefits. And whereas, on November 5, 2019, the community, in a vote of confidence in the district's ability to deliver on its promises, approved the combined bond issue and operating levy. And whereas, because Issue 8 passed, the district is poised to manage enrollment growth. More pupils will be able to attend schools closer to their homes with the construction of a new elementary and new middle school, and safety features will be enhanced in all our buildings. And whereas, in addition, overall condition of older schools will be addressed, and middle and high school students will have access to courses that explore high-demand careers. Therefore, be it resolved that the board and superintendent deeply thank our community, our schools, for volunteering their time and expertise to help pass Issue 8, which will give current and future students and staff in the Westerville City School District the amazing opportunity to excel in their greatest potential, November 18, 2019. Will you give these ladies another round of applause? They're coming up. They're coming up. We have asked Colleen Moody, one of the three who really spearheaded this campaign. We know that it's beyond a village in order to do this. And so we've asked Colleen to highlight, to recognize a few people. And I will point out one thing. You see these little blue bells? You can't see, but it says Issue 8 on it. And as you know, Westerville City Schools, kind of the bell, the logo, and so on. But we wanted to highlight that these were designed, created by the students in the shop in Westerville North High School. So this is a gift from students.
Thank you so much for this, and thank you all for the direction and the leadership that inspires all of us to step up and take on an effort like this. You truly are creating the environment for our students that made me want to come back. I went to school here, moved away, and came back. So thank you all. And now, there are so many people actually in this room who were, I would guess, probably like 98 percent, who were involved in this effort. But I'm just going to highlight five who were part of the committee here. And my brain doesn't work when I'm up in front of people, so I wrote it down. Our treasurer, Cam Hyatt. Leader of our school captain program, Liz Washburn. Marketing extraordinaire, Mike Wander. Nancy McFarland. Come on, Nancy. And two that aren't here, I just want to say their names, Jessica Stein and Rachel
One more round of applause for all the people. Tremendous amount of work, and we really appreciate that. And we were thrilled to give you those bells, because I think that's just a great gift from the schools. Demonstrates some of what the schools are learning in their technical area. So thank you all. We have one other recognition tonight. It's one recognition, a lot of people that we're going to recognize. We have an organization called Westerville Parent Council, and it's a combination of the boosters and support groups, and I'll let their president come up and tell you more about that. But I would like to invite forward President Liz Washburn.
Thank you, Board of Education. Westerville Parent Council is a 501(c)(3) organization that represents 35 member groups. As Rick mentioned, these are PTAs, PTOs, booster, and community groups that serve the Westerville City School District. Parent Council provides assistance to these organizations to ensure that families are engaged and connected in Westerville schools. As president of Parent Council, I truly believe that the collaborative efforts of our parents and families with the staff across our district is the key driver to the overall success of our students. The volunteer support report from the 2018-19 school year once again shows that together we really can do so much more. I'd like to just highlight the findings that 30 of our 35 member groups reported from last year. Volunteers in our member groups provided over 56,759 hours of donated time and talent in the areas of music, athletics, arts, theater, literacy initiatives, student leadership development, tutoring, mentoring, and countless clubs and experiences, both in the classroom and far beyond the classroom walls. These reported hours would be the equivalent to 39 full-time staff members. These groups also provided monetary support totaling $625,386.53. The support comes in the forms of programs, projects, and activities that enhance the educational and extracurricular activities of students. Our member groups also supported graduating seniors in all three of our high schools with scholarships totaling $52,900 toward post-secondary education and training. The impact of our volunteer support groups in our district is invaluable. Parent Council encourages families and community members to connect with a group of their choice and support Westerville students with their time, talents, and financial gifts. Thank you again to the Board of Education for recognizing all of these efforts. Most groups have representatives here, so when I do call your school's name and your name, please come up and get a certificate of recognition. The special needs preschool PTA, represented by Suzanne Kyle. Alcott Elementary PTA, represented by Ryan Hilperz. Ann Hurst Elementary PTA, represented by Jennifer Koval. Jarrington Elementary PTA, represented by Lori Gruber. Emerson Elementary PTA, represented by Marcy Monson. Vaus Elementary PTO, represented by Elisa Heda. Hanby Elementary PTA, represented by Cassie Cooper. Hawthorne Elementary PTO, represented by Maggie Butler. Huber Ridge Elementary PTA, represented by Kristy Sherwood. Mark Twain Elementary PTA, represented by Kelly Maisick. McVeigh Elementary, represented by Stephanie Cunningham. Point View Elementary PTA, represented by Summer Spencer. Robert Frost Elementary PTA, represented by Rachel Dykis. Whittier Elementary PTA, represented by Jessica Salisbury and Julie Borth. I don't know if Principal Hoffman's here as well. If he is, he's welcome to come up. Wilder Elementary PTA, represented by Tricia Muse and Dr. Victoria Hazlitt. London Middle School PTO, represented by Lisa Chalkford. Genoa Middle School PTSA, represented by Teresa Snediger. Heritage Middle School PTSA, represented by Jennifer Koval. Walnut Springs Middle School PTSA, represented by Suzanne Zoner. Central Athletic Boosters, represented by Linda Staub. Central Music Boosters, represented by Gina Myers. Central Theater Boosters, represented by Janet Borton. North Academic Boosters, represented by Michaela Sampson. North Athletic Boosters, represented by Trevor Lorton. North Music Boosters, represented by Kevin Orr. North Theater Boosters, represented by Lynn Evans. South Academic Boosters, represented by Sherry Blaze. South Athletic Boosters, represented by Matt Daly. South Music Boosters, represented by Kristen Price. South Theater Boosters, represented by Laura Lee Jingo. The Westerville City Schools IB Fund, represented by Elizabeth Bowden. The Westerville African-American Parents Association, represented by Charles Johnson. The Westerville Partners for Education, represented by John O'Connor. And last but not least, our newestly formed parent group, Westerville Initiative to Navigate
Just a final word. We are, first of all, we're very grateful for you all being here tonight. If busy lives, busy schedules, you have been working awfully hard throughout the school year already. To our community, our schools, you were pounding the pavement, you were putting out accurate information, and we really appreciate the hours, really untold hours. We pledge to you and to the community that we will be faithful and diligent and wise with the resources that the community has granted to us. We know that's a pretty sacred trust, I would think we would say. Thank you to you, and thank you to Parent Council for what you do. As I was watching you all go forward, colleagues would agree, some of these folks have been doing it for a long, 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 long time, and some new folks are a part of this as well. And I'm not saying the long timers are old, I'm just saying we... Experienced, that's, yes, experienced. We could not be, we believe, we could not be the district that we are, and I contend a strong district that is trying to be stronger without many of you in this room. And I know when we're done here, we'll applaud one more time, and I will say, you're welcome to stay into the rest of the meeting, and you will all leave. I get it. We understand that. But truly, from all of us, a deep, deep thank you.
That's right. I think I should buy her a bullwhip. I think I should buy Joe a bullwhip, because that's what she needs to get people. Oh, okay.
I reckon you really know how to clear a road.
Okay. 4.1, approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on Monday, October 28, 2019. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Okay.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor?
Sorry.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any reports this evening, which takes us to public comments. We do not have any public comments at this time. Takes us to financials. 7.1 is our five-year forecast. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, you want to talk to us?
Yes, bear with me. I think I have 20 slides here. So we're going over the November five-year financial forecast. Might help if I turn this on. All right. So the purpose of the forecast, it's a valuable, long-range planning tool. So it's also meant to serve as the basis for the 412 certificate. The 412 certificate is something required by Ohio revise code 5705412, which is why they call it the 412 certificate. It's the certificate of revenue required for school district expenditures. It is required for any contract that is over $500,000, any new salary or wage schedules, and any appropriations resolution. And the other purpose of the forecast is to provide a method for the Ohio Department of Education and the Otter State to identify any issues towards financial difficulties and things like that for districts. We're required to file a five-year projection no later than November 30. In previous years, this was October 31. That just changed for this year. It has to include the current fiscal year and the ensuing four fiscal years. It is only for the general fund. We do have to update the projections no later than May 31 of each year with the Ohio Department of Education. And then we also include three years of actuals for historical purposes, just to have the information there. Just a reminder that the district operates on a fiscal year, so that runs July 1 through June 30. So when we're going through talking about this, it's for the general fund only, for fiscal year running July 1 through June 30. The forecast is made up of what I like to refer to as three sections, so I don't know how well these colors are showing up, but we have revenues, expenditures, and then fund balance when you're looking at this. For purposes of just space in a PowerPoint presentation, I've only included fiscal year 19. I haven't included 17 and 18. I've only included fiscal year 19, I haven't included 17 and 18 in here, but the forecast that's on the agenda includes all three fiscal years of actuals. So in looking at revenues, the main, the significant events that affect our revenues when compared to the previous forecast is, we did pass Issue 8, which was a 5.9 mil operating levy on November 5, and that's been delayed one-year collections, we'll talk more about that. And then we had some change in state funding assumptions that we'll talk a little bit more about. Looking at our overall revenue for fiscal year 19, we received approximately 60% of our general fund revenues from local property taxes, and about 33% from the state. 7% came from other sources. Projections for fiscal year '24 show 65% from local property taxes and 30% from the state, and 5% from other sources. This projection is heavily dependent on what happens at the state level. As we go through this, we'll talk a little more about that. Local property taxes is made up of general property taxes and public utility property taxes. General property taxes are about 58% of our total revenue. We have slight increases expected from growth and expiring tax abatements. FY '19 collections are artificially low. If you remember, there was a change in the federal tax law that allowed the amount that homeowners could exempt from their state and local taxes. So we had people paying their taxes upfront, which meant we had a higher amount of revenue in FY '18, which lowered the amount in FY '19. Excuse me. Again, the 5.9 mil operating levy was approved by voters on November 5. So the collections are delayed by one year. So what that means is that the taxes will be assessed in calendar year '20, and they'll first collect in calendar year 2021. So if we look at this, and the yellow is kind of hard to see, my pointer doesn't work very well from here, but... So the 119, that's a half year of the new property taxes, and this will be a full year collections here. And then it's relatively flat going forward. Just a reminder, that House Bill 920 restricts the growth that we get from value increases on voted levies. So while we do have, we'll have an update year for values in calendar year 2020, we don't expect a whole lot of growth from that on those, on the property taxes because of House Bill 920. State foundation, so when we talked a lot during the spring about the state budget, we have a BINAM budget that goes every two years. State also operates on a fiscal year July 1 through June 30. The top portion here, these are the proposals that the Legislative Services Commission put out that was presented to local school districts. You can see the increases projected for, based on the governor's proposal, the House and the Senate. This is where we actually ended up. So we have an enrollment growth supplement that will provide an increase of about $300,000 for FY '20, and an increase of about $173,000 for FY '21, which is significantly less than what the original projections were showing.
So I'm just highlighting this, that projections, Governor, House, and Senate, were from 1, 2 to 1, 5 million. Then the following year, 1, 4 to 1, 9, almost 2 million. And it ended up at about $350,000, and then 174.
Yeah.
I'm just highlighting the obvious.
Yes, and so what's not included in the general fund is there's student wellness and success funds, which is accounted for in a separate fund, Fund 467. And we anticipate this to be a one-time revenue source. So we're going to talk a little bit about, on the expenditure side, how we're allocating salaries that we're currently paying, salaries and benefits that we're currently paying for out of the general fund to that fund to help offset the flat funding that we've seen in the general fund for this year. So this is just a picture of the state foundation. If the board remembers, we updated projections at the July 15 board meeting to anticipate, in order to gauge where we would be at for the operating levy. Those projections compared to where we ended up, to what the current projections show based on where we ended up. So we're looking at three different BINAM budgets here. So '20 and '21 is the current budget, then we'll have '22 and '23, and then '24 and '25 will be the third one. This forecast, with the best information I have available to me today, assumes that we won't receive any additional funds from the state, and so it's flat going forward. You can see the difference between, for the last six years, the school district had seen increases, even though we were capped, we were capped at a 3% increase. We were still getting increases each year in the general fund. And that's not the case on the current budget. And that's the difference for the revenue for each of those years going forward in the projections. So, um, state funding, again, essentially flat funding from the state. Again, the two new budget cycles. So we're in '20 and '21 now, and then '22 will be a new one, and then '24 will be another new one. I want to remind everybody that the flat funding that we're seeing is based off of 2019 funding, which was already underfunded by the state by $12 million. So will continue to be underfunded by at least that much until, well, for the foreseeable future, so. And then property tax allocations are also state revenue. That's reimbursements that we get for homestead and rollback. And those estimates just follow our property taxes. The rollback went away for any new levies after 2013, but the homestead exemption remains for new levies after that time. But we still receive the rollback reimbursement from the older levies prior to that time. All other revenues. Flip my page. All other revenues include mostly payments in lieu of taxes. We refer to these as pilot revenues. Board of Revision settlements, interest revenue, student fees, and other miscellaneous receipts. The decreases that are anticipated here are from interest rates as interest rates are starting, or from interest revenue as interest rates are decreasing. And then the pilot payments that we receive as tax abatements are rolling off, so will the payments, and then that will be added to the tax base going forward. All other financing sources are refund of prior year expenditures. This line for the current year is made up mostly of workers' compensation refunds and rebates that we receive. And then we have Medicaid reimbursement, true-ups. We got two years for the current year. So we're anticipating the BWC refunds going forward at a smaller amount. It's, these are hard to predict, they're generally one-time receipts, so. So revenue uncertainty, state funding, we never know. The CUP Patterson Fair School Funding Plan is a separate House bill right now. It's House Bill 305. They're having hearings on them currently at the State House. Just from what it was first introduced as to what it is today, there's already been significant changes to it. I've said before, and I'll say again, we had a group of practitioners who developed a fair school funding plan, and then they handed it over to lawmakers, and now they're legislating it. So where we'll end up with that, who knows? Property values, the economy, and legislative changes are other things that could affect our projections. So we look at expenditures. Overall, they're anticipated to increase an average of 6.45% annually. That includes opening a new middle school and a new elementary school. So the new elementary school would come on the, um, come on in '23, and the new middle school in 2024. As of 2019, these are a breakout of our expenditures by group. So altogether, personnel was about 77%. We had about 12% for purchase services, 7% for other objects. And projections for 2024 were about 79% for personnel, 6% for other objects, 11% for purchase services. I like to look at expenditures by category to see what it is that we're really spending our money on. We spend about 76% of our overall budget on direct classroom instruction and support. We have about 9% in business operations. Administration services is about 8%. Fiscal services is about 1%. Transportation's 5%, and extracurricular and co-curricular activities equal about 1% of overall expenditures. I'm looking at personnel, like I said, 77% of total expenditures for FY '19. The MyVan drivers were paid through the ESCCO, the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio, in FY '19. We hired them in district, we brought everything in-house for the current year, fiscal year '20. So those costs are going to shift from another object into salaries and benefits. FY '21 through '24 includes projections of adding 10 certified and 1 1/2 classified FTE annually for growth, and we anticipate growth based on enrollment and special education needs that the students have. We also have new staff for elementary school in FY '23, and new middle school in FY '24. Like I mentioned earlier, personnel costs for mental health staff will be shifted from the fund for, from the general fund to Fund 467. And then, beginning in FY '22, we're bringing those expenditures back into the general fund until we figure out what the state's going to do with that funding going forward. Fiscal year '23 personnel services are inflated by $4.5 million due to 27 pay dates in the fiscal year. This doesn't mean, I get this question a lot, but this doesn't mean that we're going to pay people more than what their contract allows. We do actually pay, we do actually spread out our staff's pay over 27 pays, so it offsets the 27 pays in the fiscal year. And then employee insurances are anticipated to increase by 6% for FY '20 and approximately 8% throughout the rest of the forecast. I want to highlight that the district has worked really hard to curb the increases in health insurance. We have a great insurance trust committee that works very collaboratively together for that effort. The current year, calendar year 2020, premium increases that the district is seeing is 2.5%. An industry trend right now is about 9%. So we're really proud of that. We feel like things that we're doing is working, and so that's a really good thing to share. Other expenditures, purchase services just includes payments to other districts for tuition for special needs and other students, payments to charter schools, state mandated scholarships, utilities, and other services. We do have the scholarships that we anticipate to increase in 2021 for EdChoice that we'll be looking at in the future, and whatever guidance OD finally ends up putting out on that. Materials and supplies includes textbooks, software licenses, and consumable items that don't have long-term useful lives. A capital outlay includes equipment, technology, and other items with long-term useful lives. Other objects are services that we purchased from the ESCCO. So again, the Van drivers, we're shifting out of that line and up into salaries and benefits. But we also, we are substitute teachers we pay for through the ESCCO, classroom aides, things like that, and other services. And then operating transfers out, we have an annual transfer that we do the permanent improvement fund for turf replacement. So expenditure uncertainties, staffing needs, something... That's supposed to say educational needs of students. I don't know why my picture scooted over there.
But that's who it was.
So the staffing needs, so while we've projected a certain FTE for staffing, we evaluate that annually. That's just the best guess we have right now based on decisions we've made and things we see going forward. We're always evaluating whether that's where we need to be with staffing or not, so. And then the educational needs of students, economy and inflation, healthcare costs, and then the legislative mandates. I mentioned EdChoice expansion. That's, that could be a significant increase in cost to the district, and, starting in 2021. So we're still waiting to see what happens with that. So changes and balances, this is, I'm supposed to give a quick summary. I feel like that's a lot of numbers on a sheet there, but... So it shows the beginning balance, total revenues, total expenditures, the revenue surplus or deficit, which is the difference between revenues and expenditures. And then our fund balance reservations, and then our unreserved ending balance. Couple takeaways, the 5.9 mil levy had a significant impact on this. The new elementary school to open in 2023, and the new middle school to open in 2024. This fiscal year '24 shows us ending with about 89 days unreserved cash balance projected. And that any future levy planning that we do, I think will be heavily dependent on what happens at the state level. So we will be lobbying a lot over the next couple of years before the next BINAM budget. All right. That wasn't so bad, was it? Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do think it's important that we never let up our vigilance, and I know we actually do not. When we talk about flat state funding, in some ways, that's not accurate, because while it appears to be flat state funding, you know, from state aid, what we actually do see is the continual whittling away of the financial stability of the district based on new legislative requirements and new mandates that come to us. And you mentioned the EdChoice piece. So a lot of these things happen very quickly legislatively with little input, and when there is input from people who know, often that is shifted as it goes through the sausage-making process of legislation. This is much more of a worry now than, in many ways, it has been in past years. It's always been a struggle, and there's always tension between local and state sources. But given the impact of legislation such as the EdChoice movement and other related sort of pieces that strip away the financial stability of Ohio's public school districts, we are going to have to be unusually vigilant and unusually vocal with the individuals who are making these decisions. It is dangerous for the stability of public schools in Ohio to relax vigilance when things such as EdChoice are being wildly expanded and other options such as that are routinely considered by the legislature.
I agree. I think that's important to highlight, too, is that not only did we compare what was projected for state funding and where we actually ended up, but, so with flat funding, they're also increasing our expenditures going out. So that's important to know. So they're taking whatever we got last year and sending it to us this year. And then for community schools, it's based on the number of students they have. So their revenue can grow for the year, and our expenses can go up, but the funding is flat-lined.
Just a couple of quick thoughts. I don't think any questions either. Just quickly, you mentioned the, I call it the mental health pocket of money that the state is talking about, right? So the, um, the talk was around, for general funding, was a million to 2 million. And then it ended up being in the few hundred thousand dollar range. And then a part of it is, "Oh, but we're going to give you more for mental health, student wellness." Awesome. We're only going to give it to you for... We're only going to give it to you for two years, and we're going to designate that you have to use it in a certain manner. Not great. And so we're able to do some shifting using that money, but then after two years, we're going to take that away from you, or we don't know if we're going to give it to you, or we'll dangle it out there for a while. So I, I highlight that because of the last thing, almost the last thing Ms. Marshall said, she said, so we're going to need to be doing some serious lobbying. And board members have already talked about that, not in a group, individually, one or two at a time. But if I may, I would add to that. You need to help us do this lobbying. I, I'm pointing to you out there and to the reams of people that watch this online, these meetings. I'm talking to you all, you need to help us do this lobbying. We write letters. We talk to them. They expect it from us, and it starts to become a little bit of white noise. If you and the community say the mental health and wellness of our students matter, we need more resources to deal with it. And our votes will follow how you deal with that, legislators. Because as Ms. Marshall just said, the Cup Patterson Bill, that's what it's officially, went through dozens of people that work in education across the state, and it was presented with a strong case behind it. Then it was handed to the legislators, and it is starting to become unrecognizable. So you, my friends, have as much, if not more, potential and authority to go to your legislators and say, you have a formula for Westerville City, but you're not funding it. You've capped us. You're giving us some money, giving us being a relative term because it comes out of our taxes, for student health and wellness, and you're going to hear some report about that tonight about how important that is. And so you're giving it to us kind of because you're not funding it. You're taking it from somewhere else. So I, I, I just wanted to highlight earlier on that it was $1 to $2 million being talked about, and it ended up being $300,000. And they're talking about student health and wellness for headlines, and some money is there, but only for a while, and you have to spend it how we want you to spend it. So my friends, board members would like me to be quiet right now, and I will. I'm telling you that you need to be about the letter writing. You need to be about the phone calling. You will not always agree with us on levies and how we spend the money. I get it, and I'm okay with that. But if you want to protect the money that comes into the district and should come into the district, then I urge you to put as much effort and energy into dealing with the legislators long-term, because that's where you'll see the biggest bang for the buck. With apologies to the board members, I yield my time.
You have all the time you want.
Anybody else?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.2 is a resolution to approve fund-to-fund transfer from the Capital Improvement Fund to the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $2,942,650.50 from the General Fund to the Turf Replacement Fund in the amount of $65,000. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Any questions or comments here? We all?
Just to, go ahead. I was just going to remind the board that the $2.9 million is for the tax anticipation notes that will be paid off December 1st of 2020. So we'll have one more transfer next year, and that'll be the end of that. Mr. Bell?
Sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.3, a resolution to approve purchases in accordance with ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So these are what we affectionately call then-and-now purchase orders. We had two of them, one to Angie Sports Technologies. So this was for recording some basketball games, and originally, the school thought that the boosters were going to pay for this, but it ended up being a school expense. So that's why they didn't have a purchase order in place timely. And then the music showcase festivals, the Kings Island Music Festival. This really, you know, sometimes it's so black and white with auditing and different things, so I just want to show, I just want to mention, the purchase order date is November the 1st. The first payment isn't due until November the 25th, and the actual event doesn't take place until April of 2020. However, they printed the invoice on 10/17, so that makes it a then-and-now purchase order. So it's really just a technicality, but in order to pay it, I need the board's approval. Any questions about that? Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.4, approve the financial report and investments for October 2019. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Okay, so this month, we're going over October, yes, October 31, 2019, month end. For the general fund, year-to-date receipts were $82.9 million. Year-to-date expenditures were $61.8 million. We ended with an unencumbered fund balance of $135.6 million. For all funds, year-to-date receipts were $105.2 million. Year-to-date expenditures were $80.8 million, and we ended with an unencumbered fund balance of $190.9 million. Is there any questions about that? Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.5, amended appropriations for the all funds for fiscal year 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I feel like I'm talking a lot, sorry. So we have a few grants. I, I want to highlight, we did get a workers' compensation grant and the Ohio Safety Training Grant, so we're increasing appropriations for those. We received additional funding in the Data Communications Grant. And then we had a school improvement grant that was also new for this year. We have some more allocation increases and carryover. We also have a new allocation for the Human Capital Strategies Grant, which is something we're partnering with Otter Bynne University on. And then we also have additional budget requests for the Student Activities Funds. Any questions? All right. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.6, a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds in the amount not to exceed $103 million. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's okay. Everybody wants to move this.
Everyone's excited.
Okay, this is me, too. I, I want to mention to the board that you had in front of you when you came in this evening, a certificate of estimated life and maximum maturity. This is me certifying to you the maximum maturity of the bonds at 37 years. That's in line with what was on the ballot on November 5th as part of Issue 8. This bond resolution, the language in it matches the ballot language for the purpose of the bonds, and we are working with Stiefel Nicholas, the underwriting firm, which we worked with for the COPS issue when we went through the selection process, Bradley Payne for Municipal Advisory Services, and Booker &amp; Eckler for Bond Counsel. And this will allow us to issue bonds in the amount of $103 million. And, yeah, go forward with that. Any questions? Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Next is our Personnel Consent Agenda, and Dr. Hopkins is with us, but may I have a motion for 8.1?
So moved.
Through 8.9?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. I'd like to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights, we do have some retirements to make you aware of that are all effective at the end of this 2019, 20 school year. James Granis will be retiring from his English teaching position at Central High School after 34 years of service here in Westerville. Julie McGuff is also retiring. She's retiring from her elementary teaching position over at McVeigh Elementary School after 21 years of service here in Westerville. Tressa Rudic, she's going to be retiring from her nurse position over at Blenda Middle School. She's been with us for seven years. Patricia Scherzinger, she's retiring from her social studies position over at Walnut Springs Middle School. She also has 30 years of service here in Westerville. And finally, Lisa Sparks, she's going to be retiring from her reading position over at Hawthorne Elementary School after 18 years of service. I'm sure you've been counting along, right, Mr. Velarde, with all of these here? But we look forward to recognizing all of these members and their 110 collective years of service here in Westerville City Schools at our end-of-the-year retirement celebration. But I thought it'd be worthwhile mentioning that they're part of tonight's board agenda. We also have 12 resignations from various classified and classified substitute positions. There's the employment of nine individuals in a number of classified and classified substitute positions. And finally, in the Licensed Employment section, we have the employment of a number of people to various supplemental and classified pupil activity position programs. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Hearing none.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any old business, but we have several new policy readings under new business. And the first one is 10.1, First Reading Policy 1310, Employment of the Treasurer, and Dr. Hopkins is back.
Good evening again. I'm going to go ahead and make some information presented to you for your consideration to the revisions to Policy 1310. This one is the employment of the treasurer. The revision to Policy 1310 offers the board an option that is, in lieu of executing, executing a surety bond, the bond may authorize the treasurer to be covered by an insurance policy issued by a board-approved and accredited insurance carrier or join a self-insurance pool. And if you'd like, I'll go ahead and move on to the next one as well. Is there any questions on that one?
Any question?
Nope.
Go ahead, thank you.
1340, this is the non-reemployment of the treasurer. This revises the language for what disqualifies a treasurer from service. Specifically, it states that a treasurer is disqualified for services for failing to hold a treasurer's license, and if he or she is unable to secure a surety bond or insurance policy as required by law. These revisions reflect current Ohio law and are recommended for adoption to maintain accurate policies.
And we're good.
Thank you so much. Up next, 10 point, up's next, up next, 10.3, First Reading on Policy 5113.02, School Choice Options, and Ms. Wallace is with us.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall, members of the board. This evening, Policy 511302, School Choice Options is being updated. This update removes the section of the policy that provided a school choice option and supplemental services to students in Title I schools that were designated as school improvement schools under the No Child Left Behind legislation. The removal of these items aligns the policy with the new legislation in the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Any questions or comments? Thank you so much. 10.4, First Reading for Policy 5350, Student Suicide, and Tammy Santa is with us.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. I'm here to present a couple of policy revisions for your review and feedback this evening. So the first one is 5350, was called Student Suicide, now being proposed as Student Mental Health and Suicide Prevention. The revisions that you'll see are reflective of mostly training requirements and then expanding to a broader context of mental health, not just specific to depression. And thanks to Nancy for talking through this one with me a little bit more. So I'm happy to gain any more feedback as we, as we do this first reading on this one or answer any questions.
You've strengthened it significantly.
It's a tricky one.
Yes, it is.
Ready for the next one?
Yes.
Okay. So the next policy is 8462, Student Abuse and Neglect. And again, this one is a little simpler. It's just reflective of training requirements that needed updated. Happy to field any questions on this one as well.
Thank you so much. 10.6 is New Political Science Course of Study, and Jennifer Knapp will be joining us.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall, and members of the board. As we look to increase opportunities for our students to participate in College Credit Plus courses in our high schools, we are recommending that Poles 1100, Intro to American Government, be added as a course offering. This course fulfills the American Government High School graduation requirement and is a three-hour college credit course that counts as one hour of high school credit, or one high school credit, I should say. This course introduces students to the nature, purpose, and structure of the American political system and gives attention to institutions and processes that create public policy. It also talks about the strengths and weaknesses of the American political system. Students are excused from the OST if they take this course, and they can use their grade in this course as points. I know we're transitioning away from the OST as a graduation point, and we're working through those changes, but that is something that they don't have to take. They could opt to use their grade instead. So for example, if you get an A or a B, you would get five points. If you get a C, you get four points. If you get a D, you'd get three points, and for an F, you would get zero. So those, that's kind of what we do with College Credit Plus. It has that matching component to it. And through some recent conversations, I did want to share when we, within our district, develop a course of study in collaboration with our teachers, it's an extremely robust process, and it has a lot of components. Several years ago, that was brought before you, our courses of study. There's like 12 or 13 different pieces of the puzzle. But when we are in a position with College Credit Plus, it is at the discretion of the college of what that looks like. And, you know, you may have noticed as you saw, of course, the next one, teaser, that I'll talk about is something that was developed in-house as opposed to what this course of study looks like. They're much, much different. Again, this is what the college provides to us, and in order to give it college credit, we need to follow what they provide. So there's been some conversation that perhaps we don't, we no longer call these courses of study when it's a college credit course, that we would call it a syllabus. So that's kind of a, just to delineate, I mean, I think- a, just to delineate, I mean, I think a course of study, or what is curriculum, I think that's a little nebulous to some people. And this has been a suggestion, as you consider this in the first reading, to be a change for the second reading. So can I, are there comments or questions around that suggestion that we had recently?
It was my suggestion.
Then I have a comment about it.
Yeah, I figured you would. Yeah. The reason I pointed that out, and Jen did an excellent job of explaining it, this that we have before us isn't a course of study as we do courses of study in this district. And when you look at the next one, as Jen was talking about, that is a full course of study. And this that we receive, this and other pieces that we receive from higher education, they are syllabi. They are not courses of study as we know courses of study in K-12. Higher education doesn't do courses of study like that. So what we are looking at is making sure that we use terminology that is not confusing as to what the piece is. Is it a course of study? Is it a higher education syllabus? Is it a pacing guide? What is it? So that we start to use language that is clear about what the piece is that we're actually approving. So that's what the background was, and I appreciate your responsiveness.
I appreciate you clarifying. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
I appreciate you clarifying that, Nancy. That's helpful for me. And I know, like, people have really busy lives, and I get that. And they might not all look at all of this before we vote on it. I do get that. And so, therefore, I want to highlight for you, what are the institutional learning goals of this class? I want you to hear this. Goals of this class: Critical Thinking, Quantitative Skills, Scientific Literacy, Communication Competence, and Cultural and Social Awareness, all embedded in this course that is like a political science. Well, it's not like political science. When I first saw this, I don't know if you heard this comment, when I first saw this, I was wondering if there was any piece in here that could be something along the lines of, and I'm sorry, I still have a hard time articulating it, something taught, something discussed, literacy of understanding political, I'll put it in base language, understanding political ads, understanding political media, reading between the lines, looking for what?
Verifying sources.
Verifying sources, that kind of thing. And I-
Recognizing bias.
Just all of that kind of thing. And I just say that because I hear all the time, ah, these students don't understand government and political. I just think that'd be, I just think that'd be an interesting piece if it fits in here. If it's somewhere else, then that's fine.
I think we do see it in our course of study as we look at social studies, and as, even as we look at, yeah, LA, English and Language Arts, as we look at verification of sources, as we look at how we help students develop critical thinking minds that allow them to parse through that. So it isn't, and I don't necessarily see it spelled out in the syllabus, which is another reason that it's important to have a course of study for K-12. But we do have it spelled out in our courses of study. They don't say you'll be able to dissect a really bad ad and fake news, but it's laid out in such a way that that is where we're going.
And I can look for clarification in that. And I do want to say, as Jim Brady at North is offering this course currently, to see, you know, and that's what we usually do, to get feedback, to see how the course is going, 70% of the course is writing, and I think that that's highly encouraging. I do think that that's some feedback that we get. You know, we could always work on our communication skills and writing more, so that is how this course is set up. So they are doing a lot of critical thinking and expressing that through their writing. So that's exciting. But I'll follow up on that specific question for you.
So one, just one quick comment. So OST, Ohio State tests, I just wanted to remind people.
Oh, thank you.
No, that's okay. But I think sometimes you're listening, and you're like, oh, my gosh, what is that? So just a quick reminder.
Thank you for adding that.
So I think this is an exciting opportunity. I'm just wondering, is this tied to Columbus State, or?
Yes, it is a Columbus State offering, and Jim Brady serves as a facilitator of the course.
So that's one of our district teachers?
Yes.
And so if, are we expanding this to the other high schools?
That is the goal. So we would offer, so if this would be approved in December, it would go in our course of, it would go in our high school academic planning guide for students to register, yes. And then we would need to work with the buildings, because it would be, it's not an increase of FTE, because students would be taking government, you know, our typical year-long government course instead. So it's one of each other.
You anticipated my next question.
Okay, there you go. And so it would be based on, it would be based on enrollment, just like all of our courses. And so we would work, you need a master's degree. There are certain specific requirements, and every department is slightly different. It's like a 48-page document from Columbus State. But to be a facilitator, you need either six hours in political science, or you have to have your master's degree in a related field. You can be an adjunct professor if you have 18 hours in that specific area. We don't currently have teachers that have that, so we have a lot of facilitators. I will say some of our business teachers, I think, have that qualification based on their background. But we don't in social studies.
Okay, thank you.
And students can take, I'm sorry, any course at Columbus State, so if, or Ohio State, or Ottermind, so if they choose to do that, we don't bring those here. We bring courses here that are offered or provided by our teachers. So that's kind of where we have that separation. Okay. Any question? Can we move on to the next one?
Sure. Thank you.
Through our expansion of advanced placement opportunities, Westerville City Schools has been offering AP Computer Science A and AP Computer Science Principles over the past several years. To better prepare our students for these courses, our high schools have been piloting an introductory course. Data supports that this course aligns with our business offering and is a good fit for students as they consider this computer science course. So we had students who were like, okay, computer science, great opportunities. Our business teachers teach those courses. They were both AP courses. They're kind of like, ah, you know what, we're kind of maybe not putting all of our ducks in a row. So they developed an introductory course, and they've been refining it. And they feel like a better name is Introduction to Computer Programming. It's a semester course. It allows students to get a taste of computer science or computer programming. It's a little less stressful to jump right into an AP course. Students don't need this course to go into the AP course, but they've seen it as a great fit and a way for students to kind of dip their toe into this course. Again, no additional FTE. They've been offering this within their course offerings in a pilot way. This course does allow students to be introduced to the fundamentals of computer programming and coding, and they'll go from understanding and writing algorithms to writing computer programs. This course also does count as a technology elective for students who are pursuing the STEM Honors Diploma.
That's cool.
Yeah. And the business teachers have done a super cool job of saying, hey, you know, we need to back it up and develop a course that really supports our kids where they are. So I think this is super cool of them. And it looks like a traditional course of study. What we say is a traditional course of study.
It is a course of study.
So it's a course of study. We're not changing that part.
Okay.
Questions around this course?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next, 11.1, Donations, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Which we are always grateful for, these donations. Thank you so much.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, Overnight and Out-of-State Field Trips, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Looks like some fun trips. Any questions or comments? Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.3, Grant Land Owned by the School District to AT&amp;T for Purposes of Utility Easement, and Mr. Dorn is with us, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. The AT&amp;T easement is the third utility easement being requested for the board approval in support of the renovation and expansion of South High School. The gas and water line easements were previously approved by the board in May and June respectively. This easement is to support the relocation of AT&amp;T's existing communication fiber line that was in the path of South's building expansion. The requested easement runs north and south on the west side of South High School, and is fully described in the AT&amp;T Ohio Utility Easement documents that are part of this resolution. The easement is six feet wide and 818 feet long. And because the easement spans two separate parcels, two documents were prepared, one for each parcel. AT&amp;T estimated the cost to replace and relocate the fiber line to be $58,697. The actual cost was 29% under their estimate at $41,508. It is being recommended that the board grant the utility easement to AT&amp;T as presented.
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.4, Resolution Approving the Demolition and Site Restoration of Central College Elementary School, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dorn?
The demolition of Central College Elementary School is a component of the district's facility master plan that was recommended by the community-led Facility Planning Committee. The scope of work includes demolition of the school building and removal of the parking and playground asphalt. The disturbed site areas will be graded as required, and seating will occur under a separate contract in the spring, so we'll be creating a green space. Bids were solicited. In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, on October 28th, we received eight bids that were publicly read on November 8th. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Lowen Decken-Sons in the amount of $99,300. Lowen Decks' bid is $80,700 under the architect's estimate. It is being recommended that the board accept Lowen Decks' bid as presented.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Thank you. 11.5, Appointment to the Library Board of Trustees of the Westerville Public Library, and it is Cynthia DeVice, may I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments here?
She knows it's like a seven-year term, right?
We'll tell that tomorrow.
Okay, good point. Good way to do it.
Whenever you're ready.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Up next is Public Comments. We have one speaker this evening. Just a friendly reminder, you will have five minutes, and our first speaker is Lori Gruber. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. I'm Lori Gruber, and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to speak on substitute teaching in Westerville and the lack of substitute teachers. And I'm coming today as not only a parent of a third and fourth grader in the Westerville schools, but also as a substitute teacher myself. This is my third year substitute teaching, and I've had the privilege of only subbing at my son's school here in Westerville. And I thought I'd start off as just a couple days a week, but I am pretty much every day, and it's not enough. There are probably two or three times a week when we do not have a substitute for a position, or when children do not have a teacher in their classroom. And some of the things that happen is that a sub will be pulled from a supplemental position, whether it's an art substitute or a special ed or an intervention, and then being asked to then teach a dent ed classroom. There have been a couple of times when even our principal has taught for a couple of days that I've even been aware of. But what happens most often is that classrooms are split, which means, for example, last week, I taught fourth grade, and there are three fourth-grade teachers. I was subbing for one of them, but we didn't have a sub in another fourth-grade classroom, so the classes were split. So I was given an additional 15 students. So when classrooms, and this happens all the time, so classrooms that are already bursting at 25, 26, 27 kids are now being given over 40 kids that they have to teach for the entirety of the day on last-minute notice. So as I said, that happened to me last week. Today, this week, actually, I am assigned to be a substitute in a first-grade classroom for the entirety of the week. And I show up for work this morning, and they do not have enough subs in the building, so they told me I had to go up and teach fifth grade, and that they were going to split the first-grade classrooms. And so without asking or without any say, that's just kind of what happens. And that happens probably two or three times a week where classrooms are split because we don't have enough. And I'm sure there's a number of reasons why this could be happening. One of them could be, as I said, that they often pull subs from other positions. So when you're a sub, if you sign up to teach art, or to teach special needs, or an intervention classroom, you are not guaranteed that that's where you will be. You could be asked to teach in a fifth grade, or wherever they need you. And I've talked to numerous colleagues who have said that they did not feel, you know, if you go into a position expecting one thing, and you're asked to do something else, maybe they didn't feel like they were qualified, or didn't feel comfortable in that position. So I've heard from a few substitutes that said that they will not be coming back because of that. Also, I've researched through the ESC, the district pay rates of all the districts that the ESC employs. And Westerville is among one of the lowest-paid districts for substitute teachers. Out of the 29 districts that the ESC works through, there are currently 23 districts that pay higher than Westerville. So I think that could possibly be a factor. And I'm not saying that, I know the answer, but I'm just coming to you today, wondering if you are aware of the lack of substitute teachers throughout the district, voicing my concerns as a parent and as a substitute teacher, and wondering what, if you are aware, what could be done, or what is being done to address the lack of substitute teachers in Westerville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for sharing your concerns. We appreciate it. Up next is Board Comments, and who would like to go first? Anybody? No?
Just one real quick word. You may or may not know that this is Ohio Education Emphasis Week, beginning today, the 19th. And that was actually begun by somebody in the state legislature. True story there. So we just want to celebrate all of our educators and what they do. So, thank you.
I would suggest that it might be helpful, Dr. Kellogg, if you could give us an update on the substitute issues and the questions. That would be helpful to me, I know. And it might also help us as we address the concerns that are raised, and as we look toward whether there are any impacts we can make on the issue.
Thank you. Anybody else? We've spoken a lot about mental health tonight, and I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that Challenge Day was hosted in all three of our high schools last week. And I want to publicly thank some people. First off, for Steph Martin, who organizes it, for our AM Rotarians who come back year after year and volunteer their time and give money, to Tammy Santa and her team, who are there all day, the counselors, and at night making phone calls, and will continue to follow up. We are so blessed to have you in our district, and grateful and thankful for you. To Jill Beck, Paul Hopkins, and Nicole Marshall, thank you last week for volunteering. Hope it didn't scare you at all. To those who I didn't mention tonight, who have volunteered before, I truly thank you. It was interesting and eye-opening for me. I haven't volunteered in a couple years. And our kids these days really have some challenges. So at the end of the day, though, I was grateful that Tammy and her team was there, and our educators, and so many caring, kind people in our district and staff. And so I left feeling a little bit better about that. So thank you very much. So thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Okay. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, December 9, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center, and Monday, January 13, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. for our organizational regular meeting. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.
Local.
Yeah, we're not adjourned. Wait, everyone.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Sorry about that. Now we're adjourned.
7:34.